Okay, I will call this meeting of the Kingsburg Planning Commission to order. This is the adjourned meeting that was originally scheduled on Thursday, the 14th. So now we will go ahead and move to our meeting. And let's go ahead and have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Roth.
President.
Commissioner Beasley.
President.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Roth.
Here.
And Vice Chairperson Blaney.
President.
Let's go ahead and have approval of the minutes of April the 13th, May the 11th, October the 12th, and November the 9th as mailed or corrected. Does anyone have any comments on those minutes?
I have a question. Do we need to be present at all of those before we can make a motion? Or just, because I think I missed one or two.
I think it would be prudent to go ahead and just note that you would make comment, that you approve, subject to the fact that you may have missed some of the meetings. Because I will vote the same way.
Well, then I'd like to make a motion, accepting those based upon the fact that I might have missed one or two, but the changes I've reviewed and look good to me.
Any other comments from members? I will go ahead and vote, also in accordance with the fact that I may have missed one of those meetings, as noted in the minutes. Do I have a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. It's now time for public comment. Public comment is a time when any person may directly address the planning commission on any item that is not on the agenda, or any item that is within our jurisdiction of the planning commission. A maximum of five minutes is allowed to be for each speaker, and if it is on the agenda, then we will have time to go ahead and speak to that at that time. Would anyone like to go ahead and make any public comments? Hearing none, I will go ahead and close that section of the agenda, and move on to item number four, which is a public hearing for conditional use permit number 202301 for the rebuild of the gasoline station, convenience store, and restaurants at 1900 Marion Street, which is northeast corner of Marion and Sierra. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Community Development, Holly, would you like to go ahead and give us your presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chairperson Blaney, and commission members. Holly Owen, Community Development Director. The recommendations tonight from staff are to adopt a categorical exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, guideline section 15302B, and to approve the resolution for this project, approving conditional use permit, application 202301, subject to the conditions of approval as attachment A. This is a rebuild of what was formerly known as a quick corner, convenience store, and gasoline station, and restaurants at 1900 Marion, Kingsburg. On June 10th of last, this year, actually, it's hard to believe it was just this year still, the gasoline station, convenience store, and restaurants at that location were destroyed by fire. Fire inspections were undertaken, and county environmental health assessed the storage tanks at that time. The demolition permit was issued on July 24th, 2023. Property was secured and cleanup commenced while internal meetings with city staff were held. Site plan application, site plan review application was submitted, and site plan review meetings commenced. The first was held on September 26th, and then October 24th. During these meetings and after, the owner met with city staff to express his intentions to rebuild the use using the same floor plan as was previously the case. The site plan that was currently submitted is exhibit two. The property is a central commercial, and it's outside the Form-based Code area. The proposed use is permitted with a conditional use permit as outlined in the zoning ordinance In a record search, no existing conditional use permit was found for the historic use there, although that use may have predated any use permit requirements. The proposed rebuild will include 2,259 square foot of commercial space, convenience store and restaurants inside, on an existing 16,988 square foot lot. The existing drive approach locations will be utilized, and sidewalks will be upgraded. Thirteen parking spaces will be provided, and the trash enclosure will be relocated to accommodate the ease of collection and the addition of the now required organic waste bin. Per Kingsburg Municipal Code 1740050, where a site adjoins or is located across a street or an alley from various zone districts, a solid wall is required for separation, and is in the conditions of approval. This new project, like many projects of that size, will be fire sprinkled and alarmed. As part of the rebuilding of the commercial use on-site, a branding agreement has been reached with Gulf Oil, which includes a certain color palette to be used, as well as the refacing of the existing canopy. Conceptual rendering is attached as exhibit three. Finalization of the design, as well as a completed landscaping plan, will be subject to city staff review and approval. So to make findings for approval of a conditional use permit, there are three findings that need to be made, and those are outlined in the municipal code. First one is that there are circumstances or conditions applicable to the land, structure, or use which makes the granting of a use permit necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right. The proposed location of the conditional use is in accordance with the objectives of the zoning ordinance codified in this article, and the purposes of the district in which the site is located, and that the proposed use will comply with each of the applicable provisions of this title. The conditions of approval will serve to meet the above findings, and to accommodate the proposed uses, and to ensure that the owner is allowed, with conditions, to pursue his use of the property while protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Conditions are based on standards contained in the City of Kingsburg zoning ordinance, including property developed standards. A use permit can be revocable. It can be granted for a limited time period, or it may be granted, subject to such conditions as the commission may prescribe. The commission may also deny an application for a use permit. It may not grant variances to the regulations prescribed by this ordinance, for which variance procedures are also contained in the code. The decision of the planning commission is final unless its appeal to the city council. The planning commission is the acting body for approval of, review and approval of conditional use permits. Environmental review is, this action, the replacement or construction of a commercial structure with a new structure of substantially the same size, purpose, and capacity, is a categorical exemption under CEQA, and any new additions or changes to the site in the future may be subject to environmental analysis. Staff recommends that the categorical exemption be adopted by the Kingsburg Planning Commission, and that the approval of the resolution number 202304, approving the conditional use permit application, subject to the conditions of approval, is to rebuild this gasoline station and convenience store and restaurants at 1900 Marion Street in the city of Kingsburg. This concludes my staff report, but we do have a number of city staff here tonight to answer any particular questions. There will be, Daniel Galvez is here from Public Works, Dave Peters, our contract city engineer, and A.J. O'Connell, our building official. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, it is now time for discussion by the commission. Do any of the commissioners have questions regarding this presentation?
Yeah, I have a question. For, probably for the city engineer, if we look under the building division conditions, number 19, it says, "The previous structure on the property suffered significant fire damage and was subsequently demolished with the attention of certain elements," without reading all of that. The extent of the demolition, it basically, right now, we're down to the slab and the existing pads. Is that the extent of the demolition? Is it going to, the rest of it going to be demoed? Where are we at in that?
Okay.
Yes. Thank you so much for the question, Commissioner. The demolition permit, the issuance was contingent upon the fact that the applicant submitted for an entitlement for review, for a rebuild of the structure utilizing certain existing elements. Ordinarily, when we issue a demolition permit, we require that the entire site be cleared, including any onsite improvements, parking lots, streetlights, et cetera. The only exception that was made, that is made, is if there is an active development to reuse those, to reuse those parts of the site for whatever development is going to be there. The sequencing on this is very important. The applicant did submit for entitlement review of this particular project prior to applying for the demolition permit. Should the applicant choose to retain the elements that are there, they will have to meet all current building code requirements. Foundation will need to be certified by an engineer, any sort of electrical equipment will need to be re enlisted by a nationally recognized testing lab. One of the conditions also that are in the building division comments is also regarding the canopy as well, making sure the canopy is, can still be retained in its current structural state, considering the intensity of the fire that happened. So the demolition permit has been finalized. Should the commission decide not to move forward with a use approval, then at that point, we would then consider the project to be abandoned, and we can initiate a coenforcement action on it. That is, of course, at the commission's discretion, but as of right now, the demolition permit has been finalized.
Okay, so just so I'm clear. So the demo's been finalized, but this is all subject to additional engineering reports to go in to look to see that the cement is still structurally sound, that everything is, would be rebuildable? If it's found not to be, then that would have to be pulled out to be redone? Or where are we at with that?
That is absolutely correct, sir. The entitlement phase of your review is not necessarily a building permit application. The structural elements that you were referring to would be required as any building permit application submittal, and any sort of structural elements that you're referring to would have to meet current building code requirements. If they're going to retain the existing foundation, it has to meet the current building code requirements for dead load, live load, seismic, wind, anything that is relevant in chapter 16 of the building code. The city of Kingsburg does not permit as-built, you hear that phrase a lot, we require any sort of structural elements to meet current building codes.
Okay. Further questions from commissioners?
Have we, I guess this would be for Mr. Peters, have we done any type of parking or entrance reviews, since there's the driveway that comes on to Sierra that has always been a problem for comings and goings into that intersection, and proximity to the light?
Yeah, we request, there's a condition of approval that as part of the Grading and Site Improvement Plan review approval process, that they have to submit, turning to exhibits for any delivery vehicles or other vehicles that they may have on-site, showing that they can maneuver on-site, get it outside.
When the Walgreens project was put in, because that is a state highway 201, driveway restrictions were limited, and driveway had to be moved back away from the intersection, if I remember correctly. Would this apply in this situation? Will the state allow anyone to go ahead, or does the driveway, which will affect the parking, will affect the site layout? Has that been discussed with the state of California?
I don't believe so. They're not proposing to change the driveways on the site, so the driveway that they have there is, you know, they could continue to use it, they don't need a permit from Caltrans to do so. If they modify the driveway, they would, they're not proposing to do that.
So essentially, it's grandfathered?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they do any work in the state right of way, they would need to get an encroachment permit, and Caltrans would have a say on how that's done, but they're not proposing to do any work in the right of way.
Okay. So Caltrans will not interfere with this project at this point?
Not unless they propose to do work in the right of way. They wouldn't need to engage with Caltrans.
Other questions?
Well, kind of piggybacking on that, if you go to number 25 under the building division conditions, "The space between the existing gas canopy and the landscaped triangle area shall be designated as a fire lane, and shall meet the dimensional requirements of a fire apparatus road," as indicated in yada, yada, yada. "Should existing site conditions prevent this requirement from being met, the existing driveway on Sierra Street shall be increased in width to accommodate the dimensional requirements of a fire apparatus road." So from what you said, could that be an issue? Is that an issue?
Yeah, if they need to modify the driveway, they would have to submit that modification request to Caltrans and obtain an encroachment permit, so, yeah. Yeah, they'd have to go through that process.
Vice Chairperson Blaney, I have an addition too to the proposed verbiage to the conditions of approval that resulted from a conversation that we had with staff to clarify direction on condition number 27, and we would like to propose some additional language that would ideally clarify what that, what that condition is requiring. So I'm going to just volunteer some verbiage, and if that makes sense to you, or if you have any questions, you know that A.J. O'Connell is here to answer some questions, as well as Dave Peters, too, on this. We would, at the last sentence, it says, "Wall shall be extended to the length of the corresponding parking stall to the south," and then the addition would be, "The separation wall shall be erected with respect to any required equipment, appliance, working clearance in accordance with California Building Standards Code, and verified by the building officials." Sorry, singular official. This is, this was a result of looking at what was proposed as part of the site plan, and I had some concerns that arose about the clearance around some of the hardwired equipment back there. So hopefully, this additional language will clarify, you know, what is needed in terms of further conversation with the placement of that wall.
Could you, that's condition number 26?
27, sir.
Okay, 27, it's 26 on the piece that I have, but that's a different story. Could you go ahead and tell us what that was again, please?
Sure. So according to this condition, this is the condition that pertains to the separation between commercial and residential zones, and it is in reference to the separation wall that is required by code. "Separation wall shall be erected with respect to any required equipment and appliance working clearance in accordance with California Building Standards Code, and verified by the building official." I do have A.J. O'Connell here, who would, who may want to add some additional information at this point, but this is something that we felt would clarify this condition for everybody, so.
Commissioners, this kind of piggybacks on the conversation I was having, you know, regarding any sort of new rebuild is going to have to meet current building standard code requirements, and that includes working clearances for electrical equipment, gas meters, backflow preventers, all of which are going to be required as part of the new build. The zoning required, the zoning required CMU separation wall on the property line in its current conceptual state does not allow for those working clearances, so the applicant will work directly with our office in addressing those concerns. We would like to make sure that those, that that condition is codified within your resolution.
So am I understanding you correctly to tell us that this site plan that we were given will be modified to make allowances for proper protection walls?
That is correct. Obviously, if there is going to be a significant change to either floor plans, site plan, wall heights, et cetera, et cetera, this planning commission, as the discretionary review board, would have a say in that.
Procedurally, would that have to come back to us?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so we could, it would come back?
It would come back to you if there was, if there was a significant change to the site plan, if there is the need to rearrange the location of the wall in order to provide for the clearances that are needed for utilities and things of that nature that would not have a material change in the site plan, then no, it would not come back to you. But if there's a material change in the site plan, such as moving the building to, you know, in a different location, or, or like Dave said, from the standpoint of changing the driveway on Sierra, or things of that nature, then it would come back to you. But as A.J. pointed out, in most cases, it will just be making sure that the community development department and the building official review is adequate in order to make sure that those clearances are in compliance with the existing building codes for the property.
At this point in time, looking at the site plan that I have, it shows, is it 13 parking spaces?
Yes, that's correct.
Previously, when there was a lot of congestion and parking problems with the activity that occurred, especially off of the backside, the side of the building where the service vehicles will be parked. Will this parking be affected, and will it be, is this adequate?
We did, we did do a parking analysis, and it meets the requirements, especially with the, with the restaurant configurations. I was aware of the concerns from the previous layout about challenges to parking. I mean, I heard about parking on sidewalks, and, you know, a little bit of a haphazard approach to parking at times on that site. As a consequence, we did require some red curb, red curbing to be done on, in the internal part of the site, that we hope will make it clear to customers and patrons where they can and can't park. But at this point, the actual, the parking calculations are met by this, by the number of stalls that are represented here.
Further questions from commissioners?
Yeah, is there a fence going alongside parking space 10 to enclosure, trash enclosure? Is that blocked? Is there, with the pictures, it shows a fence being extended out, blocking the alleyway?
The, the current, my understanding of the proposal is that the, and to reflect the conditions of approval, were that the CMU wall was going to be extended alongside the north side of that number 10 space to end at the end of the, end of that parking stall. If there is a fence shown to extend to the corner lot there, that's, that at least was not the intention that I know of.
Yes. Less of the back of that number 10 stall. So that's, that would be okay?
So it'll just stop at the end of this?
Yes.
Okay.
That's just on the rim?
Yeah, no, there's just no gap in it.
It's not the closest part.
It's not feasible with trucks and delivery trucks in the gasoline.
Yeah, no, that would be an access point.
So in summation, just, sorry.
So in summation, just looking at this, we're basically, you're proposing rebuilding exactly what was there before, and putting Gulf labels on it?
The property owner is here tonight, if he wishes to, or he, or his representative wish to speak a little later on, when that's, when that is permitted, I'm sure he could address both.
Is there further comment before I open this up to discussion for public comment?
The only other comment I'd have would be this trash enclosure. It says it's two bins, but I think you're going to have to have three bins. Daniel would be able to address that probably better, but on the side, if you're having two restaurants, you're going to need to have the food waste now also. So is that, that's a city standard trash enclosure that they have marked out there?
So they do have an existing location where they've discussed placing additional containers, so I'm just going to kind of walk over it.
Excuse me, would you mind going ahead and just identifying yourself, because this has to be on the record?
Daniel Galvez, Public Works Director, I apologize, Commissioner. So the location that they previously used as a trash enclosure is that area there. In their conversations, I think they're going to be utilizing 95-gallon carts for their organic waste, just because of the location of the restaurants and where they're going to be located on the, on the premises. Like I said, we have discussed that with Mid Valley, and they've approved that location or that use of the 95-gallon carts, so.
Question, since we're talking about the trash enclosure, is the trash enclosure at the extreme, in this case, left-hand side of that triangle piece?
That's correct.
Will it be a block wall enclosed trash enclosure, like most of them are?
Yes, per our standards, correct.
Is the circulation for traffic, will that impede? And I realize that this is, it's hard to say, looking at this map, but space number 10, if we're talking about pulling in a one-ton truck, a delivery truck, is that a possible turning problem, or a backing problem?
Dave Peters, city engineer. So we have addressed, addressed that with the applicant. They do not believe so, but that's why we put a condition that they need to demonstrate to us on the plan, how the trucks are going to maneuver around the site. That's why we have the, the turning template exhibit requirement as part of the Grading and Site Improvement Plan. So we'll know exactly which trucks are going to access the site to do the fueling, and, you know, whatever other deliveries are made, and how they're going to come in. The computer program will actually track the wheel tracks through the site, as it comes in, as it goes through the site, and as it exits, so we'll be able to make sure that the driveways are wide enough, that they're not going to go over any curbs, or hit any, hit the trash enclosure or anything like that, so. And, you know, if they can't demonstrate that, then we won't approve the Grading and Site Improvement Plan, and if they have to change the site plan in order to, you know, meet that requirement, then, you know, you'd have to come back to the planning commission, so.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Any further questions? If not, I will go ahead and open it up for public comment. If not, I will go ahead and open it up for public comment. Does anyone from the public wish to go ahead and speak to any of the questions or concerns that the commission might have? Hearing none, I will go ahead and close the, we'll have continued commission discussion. Any further discussion from commission?
Ollie, we used to have an architectural review committee, if I remember right, on some of the things. Is there, that's not done anymore? The city does that in-house?
That does, that is done in-house, yes. And you're right, they did have an architectural review committee. Mike, maybe you remember when it was, but it was... Yes.
If not, then I will go ahead and, if I hear no further commission discussion, I will go ahead and close the public comment period and close the public hearing. We have two actions that are recommended by staff. The first is to adopt a categorical exemption for SEQA. I would entertain a motion to adopt the exemption. Guys, I'm looking for a simple motion to adopt the SEQA categorical exemption. I have a motion to adopt it. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, this is for the, this is not the site adoption. This is only for SEQA.
Oh, they're not conjoined?
No, they're not conjoined.
For the SEQA part, then?
SEQA only. Again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the SEQA guideline exemption has been approved. The second motion would be to approve Resolution 2023-04, approving the conditional use permit application, subject to conditions of approval, with the addition of the wording as recommended by our planning department and code enforcement officer. Do I need to go ahead and, excuse me, do I need to go ahead and read those or have those, that wording, that additional wording read into the minutes?
Yeah, I would suggest you do so and, Ollie, to identify which condition it would be attached to.
Yes, my version says 27, so the condition 27, and I'll read the entire condition, so we're just clear on what that one is. "Per Kingsburg Municipal Ordinance, a separation between commercial and residential zones must be provided by a six-foot concrete block wall along the property line to the north. Wall shall be extended the length of the nearest corresponding parking stall to the south. The separation wall shall be erected with respect to any required equipment and appliance working clearance in accordance with California Building Standards Code and verified by the building official."
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution with the additional wording and with the understanding that if any of these changes in traffic pattern or driveway configuration be required, that it will have to come back to us. Do I have a motion?
You have to take action. You can't not take action. Either a motion for or a motion against, but you have to take action.
Based on what I have in front of me, I would make a motion against.
Okay, I have a motion to deny the conditional use permit as presented. Do I have a second to that motion? Not hearing a second to that motion, the motion dies for lack of a second. So the other action to be taken would be to approve the conditional use permit based upon the additional wording and assurances as required in the conditional use permit as printed by staff, with the assurance that if any of these conditional use permit cannot be met or the site plan is modified, it would have to come back to us. Do I have a motion for that effect? General, we need to take action, one way or the other. The chair will then go ahead and take his prerogative to go ahead and make a motion, and the motion shall be that we shall approve the conditional use permit application, subject to conditions of approval, including the additional wording as recommended by staff, with the full knowledge that any of us, or any changes to the site plan or any failures to meet the conditions of approval will go ahead and result in denial of the conditional use permit.
We can't, it won't result in a denial. I would suggest that, as part of your motion, that it is to move to approve Resolution number 2023-04, because it includes the findings that are required by the municipal code, subject to all of the conditions, both from the standpoint of the community development department and the building inspector, and should, as a result of the issues raised tonight, both from the standpoint of circulation, the wall, and other issues, that there is a material change in the site plan as determined by staff that would require it to come back to the commission, that it would then come back to the commission for further, for a review, a second review of the site plan as applied, as agendized by staff.
Thank you for clarifying my motion.
You're welcome.
Did you get all the wording necessary? Thank you. Now, do I have a second to the motion as presented?
So the way I look at this, you're saying that they're going to look at the plan and, moving forward, because the original location had issues, and I see a few changes, but nothing drastic and based on the outline and the makeup and, you know, the way this thing is going to be structured, again, parking and so forth, we're saying that we're going to make a motion, and moving forward, these issues will be looked at, and if they don't comply, if they don't meet regulations, specs, and so forth, it will be kicked out and we'll have another, you know, opportunity to look at anything that needs to be rebounded.
That would be the net effect, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, applicant must, if you're approving it, subject to the conditions and subject to the building official's conditions. So if the applicant, even though you're approving the conditional use permit, if the applicant cannot satisfy those conditions, then the conditional use permit will not move forward. And if there's changes in those conditions or other changes, material changes in the site plan, then that will come back to you. But every, all those conditions, the long list of conditions by the department and by A.J., the building official, will have to be satisfied by the applicant. If they change those, then it has to come back to you.
Okay, that makes more sense to me than...
Yeah.
So we're discussing basically A.J.'s, Mr. O'Connell's report on the quick corner, the light items one through 31, subject to their approval, then would be the only way that they would be able to proceed, having completed all of the resolutions, basically, that the inspector has listed.
Yeah, your approval is subject to the satisfaction of all those conditions. So you're not, so you have, you're comfortable, we're comfortable that if they can't meet those conditions, and if they change those conditions, it comes back to you. If they can't meet the conditions, then the conditional use permit is, won't move forward from the standpoint of, because the approval will not be satisfied. Your approval will not be satisfied because the conditions have not been satisfied.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. I think my hesitation is that, as a longtime resident of Kingsburg, we've seen that the traffic problems around that intersection in general are just getting worse, and all we're doing is approving the same traffic flow that we've been having troubles with in a town that's grown dramatically since this was approved initially. But that doesn't seem to be on the docket, so.
That's, that is beyond the jurisdiction of our authority tonight. So, we have a motion. Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? I would like to thank our city attorney for clarifying the motion and the actions that will have to be taken. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, then we will go ahead and move on to our next item agenda, which is a discussion by our community development director about future items. Do you have any?
I'm going to include a larger audience here and someone who would, could address the future workshop that we plan to have, and this is A.J. O'Connell.
As my wife says, I can't stay away from a microphone, so after this, I'm doing a couple sets over at the Copa, if you guys want to come along, so. I want to make sure that the commission is aware, on January 11th, we're asking for your attendance for a workshop regarding Assembly Bill 1332. This is an assembly bill passed in this most recent legislative session, requiring jurisdictions to have pre-approved accessory dwelling unit plans. Essentially, this can take many different forms. City staff feels that the commission, as the discretionary body for use and design, should have a large role in how we design our pre-approved plan. So the workshop is going to be on January 11th. We encourage your participation in it. It's going to be a little bit of a different format than possibly we're used to, but it's going to be interesting, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the invitation and heads up. Ollie, anything else?
Not at this time. I plan to give you a little bit more of an update. I think maybe at the workshop, we'll talk about some of the projects around town and how they're moving ahead. I would have to say that as we close at the end of the year, we have certainly not seen a slowdown in interest in building in Kingsburg, and there've been some long-range planning tasks that are finally off the ground. We went to finance committee yesterday and got the nod to bring that forward to council with our next meeting, which I believe is January 17th. So, you will learn more about the general plan update process then, and you will certainly be involved this coming year in some of those larger conversations and some deliberations, too, so, thank you.
Thank you both. Do any of the commissioners have anything they would like to add about future items for the agenda? Hearing none, I will go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.